Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available on the front entrance of the council chambers and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present are participating via Zoom will be called upon at an appropriate time, and each person allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'm going to call this meeting to order Tuesday, July 25, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. The location will be given by Pastor Leroy Rodriguez from the New City Church, and I'll be leading the pledge allegiance. So please rise.
God Almighty, we come to you tonight so grateful for who you are in our lives. And Lord, tonight, we just come before you that you would have your way in this council meeting. And Lord, the mayor, council members, each and every one of us, give us wisdom and knowledge to decide what is best for the city of Grand Terrace. We find ourselves here surrendering to you, and we thank you tonight for your presence in this place. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Leroy. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hesse.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item A, reordering additionals or removals of items from the agenda.
No additions or deletions.
City Council, which ones did you want to look at, Doug?
Sorry. Consent calendar, item nine and item 10.
Nine and 10, and I want to remove six and seven. All right. So for further discussion. And item B, special presentation. So Michelle, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Michelle Fuentes, senior management analyst. During the previous city council meeting, properties were nominated for landscaping recognition awards by members of the public and city staff. Those properties were shown to the city council where each of you voted on properties under various categories. Each property owner will receive a certificate signed by city council, lawn sign, city pin, and $100 gift card to Home Depot. So at this time, staff would like to invite the property owners under each category to the dais to receive their awards as follows. And please excuse me if I mispronounce your name. Sorry. Again, please excuse me if I mispronounce your names. The first one would be Robert and Nivia Seavey for the category of overall aesthetically pleasing, 2297 for Jensen. Mariana Gaetan for the category of most creative, 12114 Palm Court. And we have two properties for the best use of native plants. The first one's Federico and Maria Espinoza, 22561 Bambiren. And Michael and Larissa Hawkins, 11734 Eaton. Yes, of course. And this concludes the awards.
Well, congratulations on those awards. And remember, we won't tell your granddaughter you got a $100 gift card, so. All right. Consent calendar, consent calendar. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon in the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member or staff may request removal of the consent counter items for discussion, and we already did that. So do I have a motion for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, and 11?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rodriguez Sylvia and second by Mayor Protem. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item six. Who's, I just, well, actually, item six and seven, Deborah. You want to just combine both those?
Okay.
Yeah, just, are they here, the people? I mean, would they like to speak? Did you ask them?
No, they weren't here. They were notified ahead of time because they were on consent. So they, but they, they're both very eager. I do believe that we have Hanny Bennett, who was the selection by Councilmember Rodriguez Robles, because that, under that committee, each of your park and rec committee members are your individual pick. And Tony Epps is actually, she's part of the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce. So she's also, and she is Grand Terrace resident. So she is, had applied for the, the other remaining at-large position for the historical and cultural committee and is, is also, you know, very excited and ready to help them. And, and she actually attended their most recent meeting, and she's full of life and energy and has a lot to offer.
I just want to give opportunity to come and speak, but also want to thank them for putting their name in the hat and helping the city.
I can certainly request that they come to the next meeting so that they can just take a moment under public comment.
The council have any comments on, Mr. Henderson?
Only, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate it if you would explain to the viewing audience and those present exactly the topic that was, that's being discussed.
Okay, well, the topic being discussed is the Historical Cultural Activities Committee Appointment and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Appointment. And we had a couple openings, and these two residents, they applied for it. And so I wanted to give them the opportunity to, you know, introduce themselves to the council and then also thank them for applying. Does that answer your question, Ken? Okay. Anybody else? Jeff? No? No, I just, no, they can if they want, you know, but I know they're busy. I just wanted to thank them for.
Certainly, a recommendation can be made, but we'll also send them a letter as well.
And thank you, Sylvia, for recommending someone. So I'll make a motion to approve item six and seven.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Mayor Protem, item nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item nine has to do with awarding a contract to Goodman Associates for preparing plans, specifications, and an estimate for pavement rehabilitation for FY 2023 through '24, and the amount is $52,000. Now, it's a substantial chunk of change, and there's no doubt that we always want to watch our pennies. And so what I'd like to know from the city manager, two questions. Are these contract exhibits, and how are they going to save us money?
These are contract exhibits. Actually, Goodman Associates did the PSNE for the last paying, last two paving projects. Each one was significantly, and cost significantly below the other individuals that applied. And we had our regular consultants as part of that, both Willdan and Interwest declined to bid on that this time around. So their, and their, their price is well below our, our original estimate was somewhere about 65,000 to 70,000. So Goodman Associates is below what our estimate was, and they've been very, very reasonably priced on the previous two other projects, and they've performed exceptionally well on, on both of those projects.
Does it also include any kind of monitoring of the repairs, or?
No, this is, and design engineering and.
Just design engineering.
Yeah, they, after, after we're built, they're, they're not involved anymore.
Last question. How do we want to know what's underneath?
What's underneath the asphalt?
Mm-hmm.
If we do any digging, there's dig alert. If you're asking how, how thick the base is, no clue. We grind, it's grind and overlay, and we, we're not doing full R and Rs or full remove and replace. So until, unless we do that and remove all the asphalt, remove the base, replace the base, we don't know. And that becomes extremely costly. Right now, we're, you know, up on Palm, we're, which we just did, we're seeing three over what we're assuming is six, and a couple of places that we opened up with, with the water company when we opened those, those kind of digs, we can see that. But consistently throughout, we have to assume that what, what was on the plans when it was built and that was built to the specs is actually there.
Thank you. Item number 10, Mayor.
Well, it's, it's make a motion and vote for nine.
Oh, I thought you meant one and ten.
Just go ahead. We'll do.
Oh, okay. Move approval for number nine.
Second.
Motion is second. Award contract to Goodman and Associates preparation of PSNE for 2023-24 CIP. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Mayor Protem, item.
Item number 10 is a community benefit fund grant award to New City Church in the amount of $2,000. I, my question is directed at the city attorney. I want to make sure we're not, we don't get ourselves in trouble here for a gift to public funds or a conflict of interest.
So Councilmember Henderson had requested last time we had a, there was a religious issue, to ensure that we include a statement that there is no proselyt, I say it poorly, but no religious overtones in terms of the use. We wouldn't ensure that that, that form is signed and executed as part of the approval.
How is this different than any, than a direct contribution to a church from a public agency rather than a, whatever this might be?
In, in this case, it would be a, a public event for a three-day kids camp. It's not limited to religious uses. It's available to kids at large, as I understand. So in that case, there's no religious use of the funds per se.
Took a look at their website. I was a little concerned about the possibility, as Councilman Henderson was rightfully so, about proselytizing circumstances. I want to make sure that the public understands that I'm not against helping children. It's just that unfortunately, California laws are a little different. And they've been, let's say, twisted in the courts towards a non-ecclesiastical circumstance. Unfortunately, the courts have held up those circumstances, and we have to be concerned about tax circumstances as well as gift to public funds. So if our parliamentarian is assured that case law will uphold us, then I'm satisfied.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, the, the one test for addressing a gift to public funds issue is, is there a public purpose? Is there a public purpose somehow with the use of the funds, the expenditure of the funds? And so if the council finds that there is a public purpose in, in the contribution, that should be sufficient. Courts will tend to defer to the legislative body in making that determination. If you, again, put that on the record.
So that's the proven buffer.
Correct. And there is case law that, so again, so long as the legislative body makes a finding that there is a public purpose and there is support for it, then usually the courts will defer to the legislative body.
Very well, then I make a motion to approve the community benefit fund grant application for the New City Church in the amount of two grand.
I'll offer a second because there, I wanted to discuss it also. I as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Do you want something? Go ahead, Ken.
As the councils were and staff, I had mentioned at an earlier discussion regarding the community benefit fund going to a religious or quasi-religious organization, that, at least in my experience, there are standard anti-proselytizing provisions that protect the grantor agency, in this case, the city of Grand Terrace, to ensure that proselytizing does not occur with the use of city funds, whether it be general funds, federal funds, or whatnot. In the case of federal funds, CBG in particular, there are, excuse me, there are specific provisions and specific language and assurances and certifications that the grantee agency commits to, to ensure that the, the, the public funds are not used for proselytizing. Now, I'm not anti-religion or anti-children or anti-public service, but having experienced a situation, situations like this, where if there's a finding made by the audit agency or the federal agency, unfortunately, you're guilty to a proven innocent. And so city manager indicated that we would continue to admonish our grantee agencies to ensure that that did not occur. I, I personally believe that's insufficient. I think there ought to be a standard contract provision in all of our agreements, but certainly those that are proposed for religious organizations to ensure that proselytizing does not occur. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ken.
Mr. Mayor, I have the pastor here that can speak to you guys if you would like to hear from him about the camp for children.
Does anybody have any questions for the pastor?
Oh, well, I do, probably.
Yeah, if he wants to step up to the podium. And then Councilmember Allen has a question.
Good evening. We have an event coming up, and it's to reach out to all the children of the city of Grand Terrace. We're including them. We are inviting them. We want to help them. We want to equip them for the school year that's coming up. If everything goes in place, we would like to also furnish them with backpacks, school supplies, just anything that it takes to make a child successful in the community of Grand Terrace. We love this city, and we want to help the children in this community. So I ask that we gain your support tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Pastor, for stepping up and explaining to us. You actually answered a couple of my questions already with your description, your explanation. But I do have a couple of more. So I would like to ask you, how many, how many children, or have you, have you already sent the invitations out, or do you know when this is scheduled for and how many attendees you will have?
Right now, registered children in the, in the actual registration are 35, but it's open to any of the children that want to come.
Okay, great. And how, what, how have you gotten the word out or advertised your event throughout the city? How have you, how have you done that so far?
How do we, how did we do it? How did we reach out to them? Yes, it was through flyers and through communication, through congregation, just different means of communication, through Facebook, through Instagram.
Social media, okay.
And we've invited the community. We've invited every, it's from K to sixth grade, K to sixth grade.
Okay, okay, great. And so I have another question. Where will this be, where will it be located at? Where will the event be at, held at? Is it going to be?
Oh, the location is on the campus. It's at 12667 Michigan Street.
Okay. And what other sources of funding have you sought for your event? What other ways have you sought to fund your event rather than, other than applying for a grant with the city?
Oh, we raised special offerings on Sunday and pledges to help support the event.
Okay. And you, and you plan other fundraising events in the community?
Oh, for this particular event, we're just asking donations. We're just asking the congregation to donate, and they've responded somewhat, but not to the, to the point where would be sufficient for the event.
And so if I understand you, are you want to hand out backpacks with school supplies to the kids? Is that what you said?
That's okay. Asking you, you said you were going to hand out backpacks and school supplies to the kids.
Yeah, we haven't purchased them yet, but that's our intent, to see how many kids actually register, and then we will make the purchase. We don't want to overpurchase.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much, Pastor. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions? Councilman Robles?
Mr. City Attorney, wouldn't this not be any different than us funding daycare at a religious facility?
Correct. I mean, again, if there's a public purpose in doing so, it'd be the same.
All right, any other questions? I have a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Pastor Leroy. Public comment. This opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on agenda, but may briefly respond to the statements made or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or may request the matter be agendized for future meetings. City Clerk, have public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. The city has received three emails from the public. Two were received before 5:00 p.m. Those two emails have been printed and placed at the dais for your viewing pleasure. We did receive another one that came after 5:00 during this evening's meeting. The email is express, both, all three are expressing concerns regarding Condor Energy Lithium Storage Project for the city of Grand Terrace. And what those concerns are, are what these individuals believe are potential dangers and safety hazards to the community as well as to the area surrounding the Grand Terrace High School. James Delay, Jenna Slocum, and Diana Mata are the three individuals who had sent these emails in. These emails will be made available to the public upon request for viewing. And those are the three written comments that we received for public comment. We do have individuals here, and the first one is Susan Grooms.
No, ma'am, as soon as your podium, as soon as you're at the podium, you're starting, please. Go ahead.
Okay. Anyway, you had said, Mr. Mayor, that there were many issues this city had to face, and we all want to participate in helping you solve the problems, but I don't know if our protests are even going to matter. The big one is this storage facility for lithium batteries. It's scary, to say the least, especially where it's located, right next to the high school. Understand there are 15 fire hydrants there. That is very scary because obviously they think there's going to be a need for that. And if there had been an explosion, the fumes would be in the air. Everyone would have to stay inside their house, and they couldn't even use air conditioning because the fumes would permeate the air and would therefore go into your house if you're using your air conditioner. So that's pretty scary. And not just the high school, but the entire city, which is only about three square miles, would be affected, every single resident, all the children going to the high school, the staff. And we're also including all of our pets and other wildlife that we cherish in this city. Coyotes could go. I would be okay with that. Rattlesnakes, too. And also, there's the economic impact. The city is probably profiting from this, but it's a big price to pay for, for the residents whose property will probably be greatly affected. Values will plummet. Who wants to buy a house with this lurking danger around the corner and across the street from the high school? Our future citizens will go there. My grand, great grandchildren are scheduled to go there in about 10 years. I doubt if they're going to. I don't want to have anything to do with them going there, that's for sure. They'll be going somewhere else in another city if we don't already move to another city by then. These facilities are being placed by the dozens all over this country, and everybody is protesting. And my time is almost up. But the environmental agency should have been present when the planning commission approved this because the safety executive has to have, the rescue services would be statutory consultees when the planning commission considered this. I'd just like to know why they even considered it. Is it because of profit? I'd just like to know why they even considered it. Is it because of profit? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Quin. Thank you.
The next individual is Priscilla Pedrosa.
So I've just become aware of this, so this is going to be a response. It's kind of, I'm going to hone it into not being emotional, so, but I'm going to read. As a citizen of Grand Terrace and a local elementary school teacher, I'm appealing to the hearts and minds of everyone to just voice concerns about this facility. I request really a moratorium to stop this construction on this project and another hall lithium battery storage facilities. We need updated county, state, federal legislation, safety standards to be established for the specific construction of lithium battery storage modules and their monitoring, monitoring systems as well as their chosen sites with full consideration regarding environmental impacts to air, water, soil, and their distance from humans and wildlife. It is not a well-developed technology, not enough data and logistical understanding of the implications of these lithium battery storage modules exist. I appeal to every heart and mind that these storage facilities should not be located by schools, by watersheds, wildlife, or residential neighborhoods. First and foremost, the lives and health of students and teachers at the Grand Terrace High School are my biggest motivator. Lithium is highly reactive to water and air, explosive in nature. Any storage modules seem to be sensitive to mechanical damage. The lithium battery storage facility in Warwick, New York was just built in May twenty, May of 2023. It caught fire a month later, on June twenty-eighth, 2023. According to their new local news coverage, toxins such as hydrogen cyanide and carbon monoxide are among dozens of chemicals breathed in by the locals for days. The reason for the fire is moisture got into the batteries. That's what's in our sky. The article also states that a lithium ion battery storage facility in Arizona injured four career firefighters in 2019 after an explosion. These firefighters in this incident reported seventy-five-foot jet flames. Two firefighters were ejected thirty to seventy feet away. Two more were injured and entire hazmat tech team were rendered unconscious. The injuries ranged, included traumatic brain injury, spinal injury, broken bone skin, and organ lacerations, thermal and chemical burns, et cetera. The investigation indicated those officers were trained, in theory, but there was so much they were not prepared for in actual practice. A logistical, logistical understanding conjunction with the specific site, the present gas readings, and the factors involved with thermal runaway. My heart goes out to those firefighters and make me concerned for the safety of our local emergency responders that have to deal with this unknown but potential devastating effects, all of them. How are these rescuers going to be taken care of now? Are the facility's insurance people going to help these families? Will Tenaska ensure these potential fire incidents, ensure emergency responders? Does, do they have insurance in place to take care of our students, teachers, staff, citizens? If toxic air from a week-long smoldering fire affect their health, short-term or long-term? Further, in reviewing the above articles, documents associated with this project, under the best of my ability, I question which exact safety standards by county, state, or federal regulatory agencies in regard to specifically housing these lithium ion batteries were followed that allowed the granting and specific approval in a GT, a location by a school, train track, residential area, and a freeway. My heart tells me this is simply not right and cannot be right. I am reading information about the proposed Covington site in Washington. They report these battery storage facilities have been fast-tracked to approve as utility, which appear to avoid the standard environmental community health and safety reviews.
Thank you, thank you. Very good, thank you. All right, who do we have next?
Cynthia Ruiz.
Hello. I'd like to go on record that I'm opposed to the building of the two-hundred-megawatt lithium battery storage facility. I am a longtime resident of City of Grand Terrace. I am the community with my fellow community. I've been here for thirty-one years, so I feel like I am part of your community. Okay, so I have concerns for our high school students who will attend, who attend Grand Terrace High School. I have concerns for the residents, like me and my family, the elderly, and the compromising health of the firefighters who will be on the front line when a fire breaks out. What safety measures do we have in place? I mean, we just heard Priscilla talk about the chemicals in the air and the fire and the dangers that could cause us. I'm, I'm literally afraid. I have neighbors that are going to send their, their babies to this high school within years, you know? I'm very passionate about, say no to this. We, we just, I, I know it, it's probably already set in stone, but I, I don't know. I, I'm just really, I live right there, Pico in Michigan, Pico and Garden. It's so close to my house, so close. So it's not safe for anyone, so please say no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the public comment we have.
Okay. City Mayor, do you have anything you want to add or anything on that? Clarification?
Not at this time.
City Attorney, you want to have any clarification?
No, sir.
I'm just going to say a couple of things. This has been in the works for a couple of years. Nobody came to the Planning Commission to disapprove this. The checks and balances have been done. The fire department, the fire marshals, training, yes, they're trained for everything, but the big what-if is the big question. You know, I worked in the prison, we trained for everything, but there was always something else. I was part of the school, building that school and our concern was the railroad tracks and the substation and the contaminated soil there. And that school's been there for a while, so it's the big what-if. Doing research with other fire departments, the cabinets, the fifteen fire hydrants. That'd be like me in the Marine Corps. The more ammunition I have, the better off I am for the battle. I don't know. I don't know if there's going to be a fire. There might not be a fire for twenty, thirty years. I know that one day, all of a sudden, we got a call from a newspaper from up north and they're riling everybody up and nobody came in and said anything. So as we're looking at it, the environmentalists in this state that we all know about is the worst one in the world. I mean, the strict laws here approved it. The federal agencies approved it. The fire marshals and the feds approved it. The county fire approved it. Everybody approved it. So what do we do from there? We just say no and then next thing you know, the city gets sued. And then the city you call home could go back to the county and we become a MAC. So what do you want to do? I have no idea. Alls I know is we don't have any legal recourse to stop this. They have done their homework. They have done everything they could. Everything checks and balanced. I appreciate your guys' fight. I know your concern. I have grandkids here. My kids grew up here. But it's a big what-if. I don't know what's going to happen. And I understand and I, I feel your sympathy and, you know, and for the elementary school teacher, I hope you don't talk that fast in class because I'll be lost. But thank you for your comments and stuff and, and, you know, best thing to tell you is keep on getting educated. Just keep on educating. I know talking to one fire marshal, he says some of those cabinets, now they put the water on there and they pretty much smother themselves. They collapsing with, I don't know, I'm not a fire expert chief, is that right? Are you guys well-prepared if anything happens?
Good evening, Mayor. Yeah, we're prepared for any, we're an all-risk agency. But to speak to any plan check process that we go through, through our office of the fire marshal. We do place safety systems in place, like any other industry or business throughout the county. For this particular business, we've added, actually added additional safety elements or systems in place to make sure that it's monitored twenty-four-seven. I believe this is the third location in the county. I believe the last, the other one is located in the city of Upland. So like any advancement in technology, we need to ensure that we place safety systems in place with lithium batteries. As we are well aware, they're becoming part of our everyday. Tesla, power walls, solar power. Not to say that this system is not, basically the bottom line has gone through our plan check review process and the per the fire code and building code requirements for this location that's zoned for that type of business. We've added those safety measures.
And we do have a contingency plan with the school system if something happens.
There is an evacuation plan that is part of the requirement for this, for the business.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that, well, peace of mind, but I appreciate everybody coming out and their concerns, so. All right, we'll go ahead and close. Any other public comments? None?
No, Mayor.
We'll go ahead and close public comment. Item E-12 Introduction to First Reading by Title Only for Future Reading Waived and Ordinance Amending Title Fifteen Building and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and Add Municipal Code Section Requiring Certain Occupied Non-Residential Multi-Family Buildings To Be Equipped With Automatic External Defibrillator Devices, Bleeding Control Kits, Narcan Supply Kits. This ordinance will not be enforced retroactively, but applied only to buildings undergoing change and use occupancy ownership and alterations where a building permit is required per California Building Code. Presented by, Louis, I was looking over there. Hey, you moved pretty fast. So, sir, the floor is yours.
Pretty fast for a big guy, so that's good. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, Louis Gardea, building official for City Grand Terrace. So this evening, I would like to provide a presentation in regards to performing a first public hearing to an amendment and ordinance in the municipal code, more specifically, Chapter Fifteen of Buildings and Construction, which will require AEDs, bleeding kits, and Narcan supply kits in occupied buildings. This ordinance does follow our 2030 vision goals, which specifically, item number two, to maintain public safety and item number four, to develop and implement successful partnerships by working with community groups, private, and public sector agencies. So the background, the city does not have any ordinances requiring these life safety kits. So the kits that we're speaking of right now are automatic external defibrillators, also known as AEDs, bleeding control kits, and Narcan supply kits. And we'll talk about each kit in the next few moments. So AEDs are used to help people experiencing sudden cardiac arrest with an easy-to-use medical device. They can analyze a heart rhythm and deliver an electric shock or defibrillation to help the heart reestablish an effective rhythm. These are commonly seen in areas where you have a lot of public assembly, notably hospitals, also in gyms, gymnasiums, areas where you tend to see a lot of stress when, you know, working out. You have a lot of stress in your heart. So these are very, very important kits that will basically reestablish that rhythm in your heart, in your heart puls. Bleeding control kits, they're mainly used to prevent further blood loss for a victim that's suffering from traumatic injury. So if there's any injuries that's related to significant blood loss, these will definitely help and not maybe stopping it, but it does, it will help a lot in preventing any further damage in a, in the human body. And also, we have the overdose supply kits, also known as the Narcan supply kits. So these are mainly, mainly include a zipper bag, doses of naloxone, nasal misters, gloves, and directions to apply a dosage. These kits help in reversing opioid overdosing effects. So tonight, we're recommending to propose an amendment to Title Fifteen of the Buildings and Construction Code and the Municipal Code to require AEDs, bleeding control kits, and Narcan overdose supply kits to occupied structures. The affected buildings will include multifamily buildings, shared community buildings, and non-residential buildings when one of the following happens. So if there is a building modification, any renovations, any remodels, tenant improvements, building ownership change. So by that, we mean if there's an ownership of the property owner or owner of the building, occupancy change, and building alterations where you require a building permit per California Building Code A-105.1. The following occupancies will require an AED, bleeding control kit, and Narcan supply kit if any of the modifications previously mentioned are performed. So these would include Group A, assembly buildings, most notably restaurants, areas of assembly, places of worship. Group B, business buildings with an occupant greater than fifty. So your business centers, office centers. Group E, educational buildings, where an occupancy is greater than six people. Group F, factory buildings where an occupancy is greater than fifty people. Group I, institutional buildings where an occupancy is greater than fifty people. So which includes hospital care, clinics. Group M, mercantile buildings with an occupancy greater than five. So example would be gas stations, for example. Group R, residential buildings with an occupancy greater than ten and not considered single-family that contain less than two dwellings. Also, please note that Group R-one, R-two, and R-four, occupancy with two stories or more, an AED, bleeding kit, and Narcan supply kit is required in, in every floor level. So an R-two example would be basically a hotel. Staff recommends that the City Council hold a public hearing with further reading waived to adopt an ordinance requiring occupied non-residential buildings, shared community areas for multifamily complexes, and certain residential buildings not considered single-family as per California Building Code Three-Ten. One, to be equipped with AEDs, bleeding control kits, and Narcan supply kits undergoing through change of use, occupancy, ownership, or alterations where a building permit is required per California Building Code One-O-Five. One. So the safety impact will significantly increase public safety to the community by making sure that we have these essential kits available and easily accessible to the public and there is no physical impact at all. And open to any questions the council may have.
Okay, before we move on that, if we're going to do an announcement, if anybody had any communications or conflicts of interest or has to recluse themselves from this item, so you don't stock in the AED or anything like that? Okay. Yes, thank you for your presentation. Council has a question on Councilmember Henderson. Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't have a question?
I did.
You did? All right, go ahead. I looked at Allen and I called your name. I looked at you over there, you're first, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mental telepathy. Sir, is the proposed public, not the proposed public hearing, but the proposed action direct outgrowth from our recent adoption of the California Fire Code? Or is this something on, done on the initiative of the city?
This is not related to a fire code, so this is from basically the building code. Amending the municipal code, more specifically, sections of the, of buildings and construction.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for that report. And so my question is, who determines the location in the building where these items will be mounted? And, and, and who determines how many of these items will go into a public building? A, you know, a large public building. Let's use City Hall for example. You know, who's going to determine the location of the AED or in the bleeding kit, the Narcan?
So that'll be, so when we have a case where we're having a remodel, for example, or alteration to building or change of occupancy, that'll usually go to the building division. And what we'll do is building staff will go ahead and make a determination of location of these kits and the amount. So let's say, for example, if it's a two-story commercial building, we will require at least one kit in each floor.
Okay, so I get that, but I, I was thinking that perhaps you could look to some experience, some folks with experience in this to see, you know, if, where is a bleeding kit going to be needed at? Is it going to be needed by the front door or is it going to be needed in the bathroom? You know, and where is the Narcan going to be needed at? Where do we mount it at? You know, that sort of thing. That's, that's sort of the point I was getting at with the locations and how many.
So usually when, again, if there's a remodel of a commercial building or, or occupancy, we do involve county fire as well. So if there's any, you know, helpful information from county fire, we'll definitely consider that as well.
So it does sound like it'd be something down their lane to me also. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay, thanks. That's all the, the only questions I have until we get to discussion.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor, just for clarification, my understanding, at least through experiences, similar to a fire alarm, usually these kinds of devices have manufacturer specs included and so they make recommendations of the best use for those things. They kind of have to back them up. In addition to that, more than likely, they have been reviewed through a state-level agency. So they probably take precedence. So combination... agency. So, they probably take precedence. So, combination of those two, probably start the ball rolling. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sylvia? All right, go ahead.
This is, this is the third part of what we're, what we've started out to do, to increase the baseline community safety and use our, our building code as a mechanism to impact life safety and quality of life issues. We've, we did the first one with fire sprinklers this, about a year ago, about six months ago. We also did the same thing with a change to the building code for trip hazards, exterior porch lights, those type of things to, to prevent trip and fall injuries in the home type accidents to provide quality of life. This is the third step that we, we really are unique in, as far as I know in the country, certainly in the state, to use this, this mechanism to build in life safety and quality of life issues for our community.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll close our questions. Public, open a public hearing and allow public comment in favor or against the public hearing item. Deborah, do we have any comments?
We do not have any public comment.
We'll go and close the public hearing. Council deliberates. I just want to say, you know, I, I know we've been, you know, Councilmember Allen's been pushing this issue for a while. I think Councilmember Robles has been helping. But, you know, it's just, all the council's been worried about this. And what Councilmember Allen said the last time, you know, gun control, you know, that's out of our realm. And I'm a, you know, almost four decades firearm instructor, so, you know, I believe about gun safety and stuff. But what really got me is what do we do the after actions, you know, that couple minutes to save someone's life? The AEDs, you know, I, I'm familiar with them. We had to use those in the prisons. Had to stop the bleed program that the fire department gave us. You know, I was going the old Marine Corps thing. The tourniquet was taboo. You used that as a last resort. Now, they're pretty much saying, use it right away. So, that was something that, you know, you taught this old dog a new trick on that thing. So, you know, so, but yeah, we were just like, don't use a tourniquet, don't use a tourniquet. But now, they want to use the tourniquet. So, all great things, and you'll go on beyond to just help. We don't know, like we talked about earlier, we don't know the big what-if, what's going to happen, when or if it's going to happen. And I, I think, correct me wrong, the county was offering Narcan kits too. And so, we can, like, give it to somebody, like, you know, the churches or some of these other businesses to help. I think the sheriffs, you guys carry the kits in your car, the Narcans?
Sorry about that. Yeah, we have just started rolling out Narcan to all the individual deputies, so it's assigned to each person. So, they have them on their person.
And then the school systems, do they have the Narcan kits too? Do I know?
I don't, I'm not sure about that.
All right. So, anyway, the council have anything else to add? Councilmember, yeah?
So, yeah, I just, I'm very excited and very pleased with the city's actions on this. And so, I want to just let, let you know, Conrad, Mr. City Manager, that what you were saying about how, you said, as far as you know, that we're, we're unique in the country. Well, I can let you know that you're probably correct. I was recently at a League of California Cities meeting with, and there were, you know, leaders from cities all over, you know, Southern California there. This was this past week. And the subject of this particular meeting was the fentanyl crisis, the drug crisis, and, you know, actions that can be taken. And I was discussing with some of the elected leaders of cities around us, including San Bernardino, and La Malinda, and, and other cities that were there, because it was a broad, broad range of leaders. And they were shocked that we had done this. They were stunned. They were just, and they were amazed. They want to do it themselves. They said, "That's amazing. You actually passed an ordinance to have these items in your building code." And I say, "We did. We're doing it right now." And then they're, they were very, I think, I, I just think they were all jealous, you know. They said, "I think they're going to all reach out to you and say, 'How'd you do this?'" But I just wanted to let you know that. And let my fellow council members know that we are setting a precedent in, in this area. And I'm, I'm proud of us for doing that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen, anybody else? Councilmember Henderson?
I just want to thank Councilmember Allen for taking the lead in this. Recently, I attended with Councilmember Allen the Stop the Bleed in-service training conducted here at City Hall. And I learned a lot, particularly about tourniquets. And Councilmember Allen and I have had on and off discussions about the need for Narcan and AED. And so, it's, it's, it's good to hear. It's wonderful to hear that Grand Terrace has taken the lead in this regard. And thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the background. I wasn't aware of the first two steps in this public safety process. So, with this being the third step, I appreciate your background information in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go and close deliberation. Before the vote, City Attorney, you read the title only and the ordinance?
Yes, the title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adding Section 15.08.020 Automated External Defibrillator AED Devices, Bleeding Control Kits, and Narcan Supply Kits to Chapter 15.08 Building Code of Title 15 Buildings and Construction to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. Is there a motion in a second to introduce the ordinance?
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
You have a motion from me.
Motion by Councilmember Allen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Is that all you need, City Attorney? Okay.
Just a vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Well, congratulations, and thank you, Councilmember Allen, for your hard work. Item F, unfinished business, none. Item G, new business selection of delegate, voting delegates for CalCity 2023 Annual Conference and Expo. Deborah Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Before you this evening is a selection of voting delegates for the CalCities 2023 Annual Conference and Expo in September of 2023 this year. The staff report supports council goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships. The annual League of California Cities Conference is scheduled for September 20th, 2023, through September 22nd, 2023, to be held in the City of Sacramento at Safe Credit Union Convention Center. Member cities are always encouraged to send a city representative as a delegate to represent the city and cast their vote on league policy. On December 13th of 2022, during the election season, we came back for appointments made to all of the various committees that this council serves on. However, the one for the League of Calif, excuse me, the League of California Cities was deferred. So, at this time, we do not have a delegate or an alternate selected for this particular event. Currently, we do have two members of the city council that will be attending this event. One of them is Councilmember Allen, and the other is Councilmember Henderson. So, with those two who have already been set up and scheduled for the event and will be attending, it is recommended that you select one of those individuals to serve as your delegate and the other as an alternate, unless two of the other council members choose to participate, or the mayor, I know the mayor, you had indicated that you probably wouldn't be able to attend that. So, at this time, it is recommended that the city council select their delegate and alternate so that the resolution can be sent to the League of California Cities by the end of August.
Thank you, Deborah.
That's the end of my staff report. Have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
No. You know, and I, I held off on this to give an opportunity to, because we had a vacancy, and to get opportunity to the new council member. So, he or she would be able to be on a committee as a primary. And I know Councilmember Allen's been doing a great job in being proactive out there. But I would still like to, my choice for delegate would be Ken Henderson and still have Councilmember Allen as a alternate. Nothing personal, but I just want to make it fair for everybody to have a primary position on, on their special assignments. And I appreciate you two guys going up there representing our city. I won't be attending because I'll be in South Carolina with the birth of my second grandson. So, but that's my motion. I don't know if we have a second or...
I'll make a second because I'll actually differ, I would actually make the second on that and say that that's fine with me to have Councilmember Henderson as the voting delegate for the, if, if, if Councilmember Henderson chooses to accept that position, that's fine with me, as long as I am the alternate and get to go.
Sorry, I pushed the voting button.
Well, not yet. I know.
I, I accept.
Would you like to be the delegate?
I accept. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Allen, thank you, sir.
And Sylvia, you had a second too, did you want to pull your?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, and pull my second, so we'll...
Okay, so I have a, a motion by me and a second by Councilmember Allen. The delegate is Councilmember Henderson, and the alternate is Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen, for representing our city up there. And let us know how you're going to change the world, please. I know you're going to be good representatives up there. Okay, let's see. Item H, request for future agenda items by city council under the section pursuant to requirements of the Brown Act. No items may be considered unless those listed below. The first request is, well, the mayor, the request, Councilmember Henderson provides some description and information on item number one to ask a brief council discussion. So, you're asking for a review of city council rules, meeting, management conduct, and procedures. Mr. Henderson, you want to explain?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This request for future council consideration emanates from the recent city council meeting on recreational vehicles, parking and storing recreational vehicles. As all of you are aware, every single seat in the council chambers was taken, and the back wall was lined up with interested citizens. It was a wonderful display of public input by our community. That said...
January 6.
So, that's...
That said, we, 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 we had some issues with respect to perceptions and opinions by individual council members. Councilmember Robles was the recipient of some personal attacks and insults. There was also some back and forth between city council members and members of the public. And so, I thought, as a matter of course, if we could have a discussion with respect to our council rules and, and our meeting conduct and our meeting management, it's a, it's a team effort on our part, but the critical role is played by the mayor as the presiding officer. And I think, going forward, we're going to have more meetings similar to that, and we need to be prepared, in my estimation. And so, I'm hoping that the council will second my recommendation to place this on our future agenda so that we can have a full and complete discussion on matters associated with our joint management and individual participation in city council meetings. Thank you.
Second.
First and the second. Any other comment by council members? Mayor Protem?
We have a council procedures that this council worked very hard on, as well as rules of order that we follow. I assembled all of those devices, as well as some information that were from outside sources regarding these things. And I think we're already covered, to be honest. I'm not exactly sure if there are some itchy points that we need to maybe have some slight discussion on, but putting the staff through this analysis is going to take some real time. And, and I believe it is worthwhile for us to work with the tools that we have and see if there's any, there are any sticky points in there that we need to maybe refine. But I don't think I'd be in favor of a full review of the council rules, meeting management, conduct, and procedures. We have that information.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Ken
I appreciate Mr. Wilson's comments. And there's only so much you can include in the agenda item itself. It is not my intent or desire to reinvent the will. When I discussed this with the city manager, he had provided a copy of the council rules previously adopted. What I'm saying is that I'm not suggesting any new rules. I am suggesting that the council focus on provisions in the existing council rules that could have positively impacted that particular meeting and, and future meetings. And so, I thought a refresher would be appropriate. One of the things that Councilmember Robles indicated was a section of Rosenberg's rules, which had previously been modified and amended into the council rules. But my primary purpose in suggesting this was to ensure that the council move forward effectively. If we can agree on the fact situation and how we want to manage the meeting and interact with one another when there are differences, serious differences of opinion, then I thought that a discussion within the confines of the existing rules would be to our benefit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Robles?
Oh, I just have a suggestion, because that was labor-intensive. Why don't we just have an ad hoc committee look at it and then come back? And that way, we're not tying up a lot of staff time or, or our time.
Councilmember Henderson, what do you think about that?
Is that an alternate motion?
I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't see a lot of staff time involved simply because we have existing rules and regulations that would be referred to in any, any discussion. If the council, if the council feels that the request is inappropriate, I, I'm fine with that. We don't have to move forward if, if that's, if that's your desire as a, as a council. Given the discussions that took place at the meeting and after the meeting, since the meeting occurred, I thought that it would be a, a good idea for us to proceed with a appropriate review of certain sections of the, of the council rules, and to more clearly identify the parliamentarian function, which, to me, is obtuse, as I understand the council rules. And there are, there's a role to play there in the event that we face a situation like we did at the meeting that I referenced earlier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, Councilman Robles, did you want to make that a second? I mean, an alternate motion, or?
No, I'll, I'll second this one.
Okay, we ever had a second by you?
Oh, we do.
Anybody else? Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't. But I do show that Ken Henderson moved and Councilmember Allen seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Henderson and Allen voting yes. Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Hussey voting yes. Mayor Protem Wilson votes no. Councilmember Sylvia Rodriguez Robles abstains.
No, I didn't abstain. Did I do it wrong?
Do you want to vote yes?
Yeah, it didn't show up.
It didn't. Yeah, nothing's happening to my button. That's what it is.
If you'd like, you could just verbally...
Oh, yeah. I support the motion.
Thank you.
These buttons and these lights, I don't know. They're playing a trick on us. All right, what was that? Oh. So, my request agenda item is establish a citizen committee to research ways to secure additional funding for enhanced law enforcement coverage and street safety. Now, one of the reasons why I'm saying this, to bring up to, because I don't know how many times when we get up here and we hear the residents, they're talking about even on our last one about the trailers, it was the issues, the most important issues was public safety and street safety. And so, and I've been on the council, it's gone eight years, and that's all I heard for eight years. Every time, I'm hearing that on every public comment. So, I'm like, well, what do we do? You know, I, well, let's, let's have this, establish a citizens committee, because citizens... because citizens are coming up and they're seeing all this stuff, how it can be done. You know, I hear stuff about we could have our own law enforcement and only pay our sheriffs $50,000 a year. I like to establish a citizens committee and look into it, and then have the citizens be educated and researched. And then, you know, Grand Terrace has such a wide variety of experience and residents and volunteers here that they could help this council figure a way how to make our streets safer, how to protect our residents, how to protect our first responders, and they all have an input on it, and give direction to this council on what they want us to do. So that's what I was looking at. And like the street safety, I mean, they probably don't realize how much it costs for a traffic signal, even during a street survey. So there's a lot of what ifs, and then every year we give the budget on what's a sheriff cost. I'd just like to establish that, a committee, and bring it to the agenda so we can look into things and move it forward. Any comments? Councilman Allen?
So would this committee require any funding? And what kind of, would they have any kind of... I mean, are they just going to be for information purposes for us only? And that sort of thing, and what's their terms and...
And that's what the whole agenda thing is about, to bring that, those questions, and how do we do this committee? How to look into what we, how many citizens we pick, funding, it's all volunteer. There won't be any funding besides staff hours, helping the committee members on their guidance.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilman Robles?
Yeah, I only have two comments. One was, because I know Mr. Gallo, for a number of years, has been working on law enforcement issues, so there needed to be a way to fold him into our processes, so this would be good for that. I'm just a little bit concerned about securing additional funding, what that means, but you guys, we could have a bigger discussion on that. And just one comment, you know, our city manager had just explained that during our workshop that it's an urban myth in Grand Terrace that the Highlands contributes to more crime than other areas. You know, so we have this urban myth that, you know, is very convenient for some of our citizens, so there needs to be some kind of education. And I just hope we can get the participation from the groups.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Johann Gallo.
I know you'll all be surprised, right? We've only been talking about this since 2017. So moving forward, working with first Lieutenant Wolf, then Lieutenant Lane, I support the mayor wanting to form a committee to work on this. We've been working on it for free since 2017. We've been driving everything we possibly can, from grants to any other resources we could possibly get. I still have a list of 39 people that want to be a neighborhood block captain for their Neighborhood Watch program, that we could never get the funding to do all the science for Neighborhood Watch, revitalize that. That was all gathered at the first National Community Night Out. And so Lieutenant Lane knows I'm committed to this. I haven't given up. And it's a personal reason, and it's a personal matter for me. It happened at my house, it happened at my daughter's house. I'm done talking about it, okay? And so what I want to see is whatever we can do with a committee to drive the resources that we need to get the funding, to get more sheriff coverage. I don't like the fact that we had a sheriff deputy get a beat down before another unit could roll here. That's not our town. So with all that said, you need a partner in this? You already got them. Been here since 2017. I don't give up. Ask people in Sacramento. I worked on something for 32 years. I'm finally retiring this year, they don't believe it. But if a bill passes this year, that'll be 32 years that we've committed to getting this done, and it's finally becoming a bill that's going to get signed by the governor. So that said, I'll do whatever you need to drive this thing. I'll look for grants, I'll look for whatever assistance we get. I know that we had the meeting to work with Cervantes. I know that we have Roth temporarily, because he's termed out next year. But whatever it's going to take to make our city safer, with coming up on 46,000 cars coming through our city, I'm there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other comments?
No, sir.
Council have any other comments? Because I'm going to make a motion for this item.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilman Robles, a singer by Councilman Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, councilmembers. So city communication, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Yesterday, the mayor and myself, Councilmember Allen, attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony in the city of Fontana City Hall for our temporary state senator, Mr. Roth. It was a wonderful ceremony, well-attended, very, very hot. But I was a little envious, actually, that Fontana was able to offer facilities to Senator Roth before everyone had an opportunity to know that there might be a competition going on. In any event, when we last attended the LEAK conference in Sacramento, we met with Mr. Roth and his staff, and particularly his chief of staff, provided us significant substantive information on how to access state and federal monies. Long and short of it, we were about three months late, according to the gentleman and the office staff there. We recognized that. And so one of the goals that I have personally going forward is to have an active, proactive legislative affairs responsibility function for the city of Grand Terrace that spans both state and federal government. With respect to the federal government, I had an opportunity to meet with Senator Pete Aguilar's assistant, who provided significant information on assistance that his office could provide. They have a grant coordinator that actually works directly with cities and participates in the development and formation of grant applications and other applications for financial assistance. And so moving forward, and in connection, potentially in connection, if a committee is established and a committee does its work and presents its ideas to the city council, hopefully that will mesh with the ideas that we develop working directly with Senator Cook's office and Assemblymember Aguilar's office. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. Councilman Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. On the 20th, July 20th, I attended the Cal Cities Division meeting, which was, this time was held at the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department Training Academy. And our speaker was Sheriff Dykes. And his subject matter for that hour-long meeting was the homeless problem and the drug problem, especially fentanyl. He wanted to have a discussion with us city leaders about those two issues, which are dominating everything right now, sort of in his arena. And he spoke about his disappointment in our state legislative Public Safety Committee and its failure to give attention to victims' rights over perpetrator rights. And he talked about the tens of billions of dollars that have been spent in the inland empire on this crisis, but the problem only increases. And so he told us that he and his leadership team are working with other county organizations like DBH and County Fire to find new solutions to address this issue. And for one of those, for example, one of those initiatives, and we've mentioned it here, is his version of the Coast Teams, which is similar to the Hope Team, but with the addition of the Fire Department Paramedic and a DBH mental health care professional, is how it was described to us, and these would be able to immediately address a broader range of issues that are affecting the homeless, especially when it comes to drug involvement. And, you know, he said, you know, it's real hard to grasp unless you're out there in the field, like Lieutenant Lane and his crew in our city and in surrounding cities, are to really... I mean, I couldn't wrap my head around that. I didn't realize it was quite as, really as serious as it is. And something like the tens of billions that the state has spent just to watch the problem grow and get worse, more homeless, more fentanyl overdoses and things like that. So he's got these ideas and his leadership teams working on it, and he asks us to help by contacting our state legislators and ask them to put the pressure on the Public Safety Committee to listen more about, to pay more attention to the residents and the citizens of California and about victims' rights over perpetrator rights. And I also attended, like Councilmember Henderson was saying, I got a chance to meet with Senator Roth and all the other dignitaries at the ribbon-cutting yesterday of his satellite office in Fontana at the city hall there on Sierra Avenue. And so I don't know after the election what it'll be like. It'll be another senator, but for now, it's Senator Roth and his office over on... So if you have any, those of you out there listening, if you want to talk to your state senator, his satellite office is at the Fontana City Hall. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Robles?
I have nothing to report. SBCTA is dark right now.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add to Councilman Allen's comments. You know, we get so used to depending on medical knowledge and recommendations, that we forget that we are the ones that control what we put in our mouths. And recently, as I've been, you know, rehabilitating from this major surgery, first, I'd like to thank the mayor for pitching in and appearing at the JPIA. It was a meeting that I really did want to go to, but I was unable to do that. But I had a prescription that was prescribed to me by the head of Kaiser's Gastro Division. And I met with that man and was analyzed by him. And I found that what he had prescribed made it impossible for me to eat. My appetite was down to a zero. My wife would ask me, you know, if I wanted to eat something, and I literally lost 85 pounds in the process. And it wasn't until I realized what was actually doing this and reread and read everything I could in relation to the side effects for this particular drug, that I made the executive decision to contact the doctor and get off that drug. And it made a world of difference. At this point, I'm gaining strength back. I can actually eat without turning my nose up at every foodstuff that's offered to me. So it's always in our power, regardless of what we think, even though a particular drug can put its hooks in you pretty well, as much as the government has gotten to a point where it actually maintains records on each individual pill. So the only thing that's out there at this point is non-legitimate sources. And if we make a choice, which we are all, have the opportunity to do so, I don't think we sometimes realize what the end result is going to be. So question, ask why. Ask why I'm doing this. I was taught by an old cowboy a long time ago to ask why, and I think it's a good policy. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Proton. Continued prayers that you continue healing. And I went to the JPIA in La Palma last Wednesday, and nothing really to report. It's a beautiful facility. They bought the corner lot, so they're going to be expanding the facility. They offer it to any citizens as part of JPIA if we need to use their buildings for anything, so I think we'd probably be paying more on gas to go down there. Anyway, they had an election for the president for two terms, Margaret Finley from Duarte. She got reelected. She's actually been on the mayor or the city council for 33-plus years in Duarte. And then the three executives, they got reelected. And she, and then the JPIA is financially sound. I wish we had their budget, you know, like, wow, they have a lot of money. Everything else went pretty good. And then driving home, I wasn't feeling that well. So I thank you, Councilman Allen, for going to the Cal Cities. I was looking forward to seeing that, but my body said no. So when you take care of, help with three granddaughters, you're the last one to get the sniffles, so it's all worth it. That's all I have. I think that's it for tonight. So we'll close our comments and go with city managers' communication.
Sure. I was asked to give a brief update on the Blue Mountain Trail acquisition and what's going on with that. About four years ago, the state awarded the city two separate grants for the trail construction and acquisition. One for the acquisition of the property, the other for the construction of the trailhead and the trail. For, as far as the acquisition, we are, and I don't want to go into too much detail because we're in active negotiation with the property owner right now, but it looks like we will be acquiring not Dr. Sigistad's property, but everything to the south of that on the west-facing slope. So the city will acquire that entire slope and access to all the road and trail up along the top. Independent of any trail construction. So in a worst-case scenario, we have an open space, and we've preserved the face of Blue Mountain before somebody gets in there and develops it, puts houses on it, or terraces it, or does something else to it. In a best-case scenario, we have a place to build our trails. That's the good news. On the trail construction grant, it was horribly underscoped. By the time we got into looking at what actually requires to build a trailhead park, restrooms, parking, a restroom building itself is somewhere between $125,000 and $180,000. So the grant itself would not even build the trailhead, much less any trail. So we're working with the state on rescoping that. And what we're working at right now is to have a very primitive trailhead and a gravel parking lot, and then extend as much trail as we can, not to the top, but as much distance as we can to some observation point, some lookout point halfway, to get us started. And then from there, as there's other grants and other activities, we can continue the trail to the next segment and the next segment, and then build in the trailhead as it goes. So on one side, we are very actively, very close to the real estate deal. On the other side, as far as the physical trail, there is still some work to do on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lieutenant Lane, you want to go over a little bit about your National Night Out coming?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that. I wanted to thank Johann's comments. He certainly has my support in his initiatives, and he mentioned that a lot of it started 2017 at National Night Out. So as we look forward to next Tuesday night, the first, between 3:00 and 7:00, we are having National Night Out here in Grand Terrace. It'll be in the Stater Brothers parking lot. I've got a pretty lengthy list of people that are going to be in attendance with booths and displays and giveaways, and I think we're going to be offering hot dogs for those that are coming out. We'll have a... We'll have a, a icy truck there, so it, I think everybody will be taking advantage of that. It's probably going to be about 200 degrees. So we'll have a way to, to hopefully keep people cool. But it, it really just does go to strengthen that community and law enforcement relationship that we have, and it couldn't be better from my seat. But we'll certainly take every advantage we can to, to celebrate the great relationship here that we have in the city, between us and the community and the community members and, and folks that are, that are, that are supporting us in what we do. So we appreciate that, and we hope, we see everybody there.
Thank you. Jeep, you have anything to add on that?
Before the National Night Out?
You guys going to have like a tug-of-war contest or something on that?
Maybe a hot dog.
All right. Before we go to recess, here's one thing I forgot to say, that we did go see Senator Roth, and Deborah did supply a GT title for his office, so Grand Terrace tagged Fontana, I guess, so we just hope that so. So we're going to recess to closed session. Closed session, two items. Item one, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to section 54957B-1, title, city manager. And item two, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to section 5497957B1, title, city attorney. So if I don't, we don't see you when we come back, have a blessed week, and hopefully we'll see you at National Night Out. We reconvene, we're going to close session. God bless. All right, we're going to reconvene to open session. Report a closed session, city attorney, you want to read anything on the closeout? Or you want me to?
I'm happy to do it. So we had two closed session items, performance evaluations for both the city manager and city attorney. Discussion was had on both items, and direction was provided by the city council. However, no reportable action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, and thank the council for being here. And remember, August 1st is National Night Out, and hopefully it's a good city event, so hopefully we see everybody there.
It's your birthday?
Oh, we'll give you a ride on the fire truck in there. We'll buy you a free snow cone. Well, happy birthday, Sylvia. Okay, well, the next regular council, city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 8, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed in future agenda item must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office and requested will process in accordance with city council. Good night, God bless.